I'll call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd like to make a motion to remove item E under ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
You're making that motion?
I make a motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Citizens comments. If anyone would like to speak to the council that's not on the agenda, may do so now. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We have reading and approval of minutes from February twenty fifth.
I will move on the regular reading minutes from February twenty fifth.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. And we have the same condensed version of the minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of minutes from February twenty fifth.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carry. And I will move approval of the consent agenda consisting of audit of city bills, final pay estimates for twenty eighteen reclaim and twenty nineteen reclaim, transit report, GAMU report, application for exempt permit from Ducks Unlimited, the January twenty first planning commission minutes, December eighteenth tree board minutes, and January fifteenth tree board minutes. That was a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda?
Uh, just a comment, I guess, on line forty-three, Blaine, I see we must have put a new hall, a door on the back of the city hall?
Yep.
Was that a, uh, some sort of a security coded door?
It, it was before. It was a locking door. And then we put a security code door on, uh, door lock on, and that continuously failed for about three years. So we, 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 uh, tried to figure that out. It didn't work, and so what we decided to do is go back to a regular door with a regular lock on it. And actually, that door was, uh, rusting out, so for a while there you could see underneath the door, and I know one snowstorm, snow was blowing in underneath the door and, and, uh, it, it was just time to replace it, so.
Yeah.
So now you just have regular key lock?
Now we just have a regular key lock on that. But, you know, it just, it kept failing, you know, and that door is used a lot with transit going in and out all the time, but you would go in, you'd put the code in, it wouldn't open. Actually, I was in the building one time, because we changed out the front doors in the building, and now we have actually a push bar, but before it locked, and, uh, I couldn't get out of the building, because the, the locking system was locked up. So I couldn't get out, I didn't have the key for the front door, because it's...
Well, you don't need a key, you don't.
Well, now you don't, but the old one, the old one you did. And so, uh, so it was just time, we, we dealt with that for a long time, and just decided it was time to, to fix it.
Yeah, I know, I know we were having some issues with it, and I seen twenty-six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and I was just wondering, you know, that's probably what the going rate of a door is, and I was just wondering if we went back to the same coded door, or if we just went away from that, so.
No.
I was glad to hear you say that.
We just went back to a lot, and actually, Mike Jacobson was working with, uh, the door company, because they were in town, it's the same company that does the school, they're in town doing Westmore, they do Superior, and, and, um, so then we tried to figure out a good solution for that back door.
Is now, so is that locked all the time from the outside? Or, or is it...
During, during the day it's open, but af- after hours, then we'll lock it up.
Okay.
So actually, one of the things Stacy had to get a hold of a key, because normally we'd be able to go back there with a padlock. I have a master key, so I can get into all the door locks, but we haven't got keys for everybody yet. Transit's got keys so that they can work their system, but, um, yeah, so it, it's unlocked. Usually transit comes in earlier before us and starts working out of the building, and when I come in the morning, it's unlocked.
A good deal, thank you.
Yeah, good. Any other questions or comments on any of the consent agenda items?
Tree Board, looks like they're ramping up for our spring planting, beside that in the report. Sounds like they got a pretty good handle on that.
Any, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, carry. Citizens requests and communications. Have we have none? Ordinance and resolutions. We have a resolution accepting bid for twenty twenty improvement project. Now, that was in your other email?
Yeah, it's in the other email, so...
How much of these are in the other email?
Uh, there's a resolution on the improvement project, and there's two updated resolutions on, uh, the airport, um, projects. And we have Marcus here, Watson, who can speak to the airport.
Okay.
Stuff when the time comes. So we opened bids on, on the improvement project, uh, there's three bids that came in, the engineer's estimate, I believe, was around five hundred and thirty-two thousand. Um, the, uh, the low bid was Riley Brothers from Morris, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, Central Specialties was second at five hundred and sixty-one, and Mark Lee, hopefully I got them all on there the right way, because, um, it came in today, was, was third, and, uh, this includes, uh, the street projects, um, and they all came in about where they were for, uh, engineers' estimates. Uh, Chiswick Ballpark, um, East Side Park Pavilion, and, and then the sidewalk work that we're gonna do on California Avenue and, and Green River Park.
Do we have East Sixth Street, the street right out here, is that scheduled to be done this summer?
Uh...
This one right here?
No, we're gonna be doing a, uh, special assessment project on East Sixth Street, so we'll be putting that together, and then we'll have a, uh, we'll have an assessment hearing later this fall on that.
Yeah, this street's really getting bad.
Yep. Yeah, but that one has underground stuff that needs to be done, so the time has come to do another one of those projects.
So you're thinking maybe this fall, huh?
This fall, yeah, we'll, we'll put together, we haven't done one for a while.
Oh, true.
A few years, uh, but we'll put together a special assessment project, and then, uh, we'll invite all the property owners in and see what we wanna do. Um, so then the other thing that I, I noted in this resolution is that this will be paid for out of capital improvement fund. Right now, there's enough money to actually pay, pay this, uh, project out. Um, we haven't got in our, uh, enterprise, uh, franchise fee money yet, but, uh, uh, the recommendation is that we just do this project out of the capital improvement fund. I did put in there the, uh, engineer estimates for each one of these parts, and they actually came in pretty close to what the engineer's estimates were, they're tipped sideways, but the street improvements, uh, the estimate was a hundred and sixty-seven, and it came in, I believe, at a hundred and fifty-nine. The, uh, the, uh, sidewalk project was a hundred and twenty-eight, I think it was pretty close to that, and Chiswick parking lot was two hundred and thirty-six, and I think that one came in at about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, actually, I, um, the last thing I put in after the, uh, the individual estimates was just an updated capital improvement fund listing. Where, where you can see what we wound up doing, and there's other things that we wind up doing in the capital improvement fund, so...
Is Chiswick gonna get drained to go through our drainage system out to twenty-eight, or is it gonna get drained back over to the south?
Uh, the plan is to drain it to Seventh Street. There was a, another proposal that came up during, uh, the process, uh, Brian Geez, the, the county engineer from Pope County, it was in Stevens County, he's been working with the baseball people, and, uh, he came up with an idea to drain it into the drain tile that goes to the north. You'd have to build a structure in there to take it in and bring it in there, um, they're gonna look at that, because that was kind of a last minute thing, and see if that would work. Right now, the way that parking lot drains is it all goes down the sidewalk, down there anyway. Um, I think Jim thinks it's still a good idea to bring it into a couple catch basins and bring it around to Seventh Street. You can get enough fall to do that, and then if you have any excess, it's gonna go there anyway, you know, uh, down to that sidewalk, because otherwise, there's already concrete that's laid there, you'd have to dig that up and connect into the tile, and, and so they'll probably work that out before they, they actually start building it. As well as, you know, one of the other things that came up was, if you, if you've been out to the baseball field, they put in that new wall around the, where the backstop was, and, and they're gonna use a netting instead of a backstop for Chiswick Field, and so that whole area, um, by the back, backstop, um, is dug up, and so then part of this is gonna be putting concrete back in there, uh, going across the front of it, it's, they actually brought in the backstop area closer to home plate, uh, when they, when they dug it out, so that'll all get taken care of during this project, too. Then everything will drain right, and we get rid of that old blacktop that was around the concession stand.
You gotta knock on wood when you say everything's gonna drain right.
Yeah. That's, that's what the hope is, is that everything is gonna drain right.
There you go, there you go.
But, uh, there's tile all the way around the, that, that field, so, and they actually ran a tile in along the wall when they put in their wall for the netting, so that's gonna get connected up to the drain tile, too.
One thing that would be nice along the north side, you know, where people park there, there's no, there's no sidewalk there, and what it, what ends up happening is people, of course, I think Bill Game owns that whole lot there, doesn't he, onto the north? But people are walking, sometimes, well, they're walking, uh, in the middle of the street, you know, and it gets pretty crowded, because people park on both sides of the street. Be nice if from, you know, where you enter into the ballpark, if that, somehow in that stretch there, we could put a sidewalk, people actually walk as they're coming into the ballpark, because, you know, otherwise you're walking across the street again, and then you're walking...
On the side of the driveway, you mean, you're kinda...
Yeah, exactly, on the north side, you know, because people park, you know, that stretch right there where people park, I don't think there's a sidewalk there.
No, there's a...
It, I don't know what it would cost to put in a chunk of sidewalk there, so, because people park right there, and then they're walking across the field or whatever, you know, into the grass, and sometimes that gets to be a little mucky and crappy when people are trying to, you know, walk in early spring, and could be safety, too, you know, for kids riding bike, because we all know kids are riding bike there, and, you know, yeah, they could ride bike across on the other side, I suppose, and then come across, you know, because there's a sidewalk along Highland, you know, along where all the town homes are.
Yeah, that goes all the way out.
I mean, I know you could come down that street, too, but, I don't know, just a thought, whatever it would take.
That sidewalk goes all the way down?
Yeah, that's, that's the one that goes all the way down on Seventh Street, but I just thought that section there would be, kind of nice to have it if it would be possible, but...
That's a good idea. That's a good idea.
I will move a resolution accepting a bid for the twenty twenty improvement project from Riley Brothers Construction of Morris for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-six-ten being the low bid for this project.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Felixon?
Yes.
Mary Hees?
Yes. We have a resolution approving twenty twenty professional services agreement with TKDA.
So that one's pretty straightforward, and I don't know that Marcus has to get up and explain that one, but that's just basically renewing the, uh, the agreement that we have with TKDA Engineering, they were selected out of the selection process to be our, uh, airport, uh, engineers again, and this is just a contract that...
Wait, this is land acquisition.
Sorry?
Is that on the, your supplemental, or is that on the...
No, uh, that's on the original one.
That's on the original, yeah.
Okay, yep.
And so this would be for a five-year period, that's maximum that we can do, going through March tenth of twenty twenty-five.
I'll move approval of the resolution approving twenty twenty professional services agreement with TKDA for the Morris Airport.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Felixon?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Solbi?
Yes.
Mary Hees?
Yes. Now we have the resolution authorizing professional services from TKDA for land acquisition. Now that's part of the supplemental.
That's part of the supplemental.
The first one, the first page.
So I don't, you, do you wanna just explain that, Marcus, if you wanna come up to the microphone?
Sure thing, thanks, Blaine, good evening, you're good, Marcus Watson, TKDA.
Welcome.
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to walk through the land acquisition agreement that's before you this evening. Just give you a little bit of history, um, for the past year or so, we've been working on the environmental assessments for the runway extension. The FAA did approve that back in late February, a few weeks ago, which really allowed the, the, the real wall to get rolling on a lot of the airport improvement actions that came from that, the consultant selection, land acquisition, eventually denied construction. Um, so after the consultant selection period's been completed, it has been, we're honored to be your airport engineers, continuing on, um, the first item of, of work that would need to be completed is to acquire about eighteen acres of land that was included as part of the environmental assessment. It's agricultural land, um, that affects three parcels, uh, two different landowners, all agricultural use. It's for, um, land use compatibility as required by the FAA and the DOD Aeronautics. I don't believe the, uh, or I don't believe any of the uses would change in the future. It could remain agricultural, but the, the city is your program to own that and for control. So the services agreement that's before you, um, includes the, um, negotiation, survey, title work, appraisal, few appraisal as required under the Unicorn Act for federal funding, and then the negotiation services to acquire, um, those two, uh, two parcels for the, the project. The amount of that, I don't have the exact one, I believe it's gonna be about forty-five thousand dollars.
Forty-four nine twenty-six.
Nine twenty-six, yes, I do have it here, thanks, Blaine. Um, that is, again, the services that go along with acquiring the land, the, ultimately, when the land is acquired, and there's a negotiated settlement, and there's title of possession, then the, um, cost of that plus the services are reversible by the FAA. The FAA would provide ninety percent funding, um, and now it's like five, that would be five percent. That grant would not be submitted until, um, title of possession is in place for the land and in lines with the, um, grant cycle timelines, sector of environmental government. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The, um, the ELS there for the twenty-four nine ninety and the compensation, are they the negotiators? Are they the, the, uh, let's see, uh, Wood Seth Smith, Nolte, and are they, but, uh, who are both of those entities?
Yeah, so, uh, it's, uh, our, our team that was included, um, is TKDA to oversee the project, update the property map, and work with the FAA. Wood Seth Smith and Nolte, WSN, provide survey services.
Oh, okay.
As part of that, and then Evergreen Land Services, who assisted the city about ten years ago with a part of the land for the parallel taxiway, they're also part of the team that worked with the negotiator.
They're the negotiator?
Correct.
Oh, I understand, okay.
Have the landowners been approached at this point yet?
Yes, I know Blaine, he can probably speak to that more, so, um, just in general, in terms of...
Yeah, from the very beginning, uh, they, they were part of the discussion as far as the runway extension, when we looked at the environmental, uh, assessment for it, so the, the landowners know, uh, who they are, and that we're interested in doing some, uh, land acquisition. Actually, there's one piece of land that is currently owned by us, that's farmed by one of the landowners, that, uh, was acquired, I think in the early two thousands, um, and there's no record of exactly how that transacted as far as us, so, actually, I don't know that the county assessor had it on the tax rolls, so, so it was kind of an interesting piece of land, but, uh, yeah, they know, they know who they are, and, and they've already seen the pieces of land that we need.
Did we have a cost per acre in mind, what we were paying for that? I thought we talked about that, or is that something that...
That, that's gonna be what the appraiser's gonna have to take care of.
Okay.
Because I would venture to guess, you know, the, you know, the federal government's gonna s- basically set what they're gonna pay, you know, and that's why we have to go through this whole process, have it professionally appraised, come up with the amount, you know, meet with the landowner, negotiate, if it's higher than what, uh, it's appraised at, they do have a little bit of wiggle room, but, uh, they, they won't, they won't pay whatever the person wants, and, and it's just gonna be a matter of seeing what's gonna happen. In, in the case of this land, some of it's gonna be farmed again, so then, obviously, if we're buying farmland from a farmer that's farming it now, he's probably gonna be interested in farming what he can again, uh, and that's part of what happened in the old discussion, where, uh, we have to kind of work out those arrangements, too. You can only, um, go so far in letting somebody be able to farm something temporarily, there might be some, some things that they can do, but eventually, we own it, the government paid for it, the government's not gonna let you give it away to somebody to farm, they just don't do that, and, and so it gets tricky when, when you do it, and that's why, um, you need somebody that can come in and know and understand what all the rules are when you're dealing with it.
We will say, too, about the timing. Strategy has been to fast track this project as much as possible. We are limited by the FAA and federal government timeframes, and I will say that the FAA has changed the grant application deadline for this year, but they've actually moved it up by six weeks. So for a project that's on a tight schedule and losing six weeks overall to try to meet a grant deadline, it's very difficult. So we're continuing to move ahead, that's why we're presenting professional service agreement, agreements tonight, uh, to the council, to do as much as we can to take advantage of the funding that's there, um, and then see what happens before the, the grant deadline here, and then if there are opportunities to get reimbursement, we'll pursue those with the city, now continue discussions with the FAA and get it off the cover.
Okay, great, any other questions for Marcus? All right, thank you, Marcus. So we have the resolution, uh, authorizing professional services for phase one.
This is for the land acquisition?
Yeah, that's it, excellent. For the land acquisition.
I'll move on that, authorizing professional services from TKDA for land acquisition for the runway fourteen dash thirty-two extension project, the Morris Airport.
I will second. Any further discussion on that resolution? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Mr. Felixon?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Solbi?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Mary Hees?
Yes. We have resolution, that's the next page, resolution authorizing professional services from TKDA for land acquisition. No, the next one, for phase one design, and, uh, for the runway extension project.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll have you explain that, too, I was trying to find it.
Is that, is that in the supplement, or is that in the original?
Supplement.
It's in the supplement.
This is in the supplement, because at the time, we didn't know what the estimated cost is, and he's gonna explain to you how these costs work on this.
So, yeah, so as Blaine mentioned, there, there are a lot of moving parts there, a lot of different technical requirements and process things to go through, especially with a fast track project, we're trying to be as flexible as possible, but still work within the bounds of, of the rules for federal funding. So land acquisition, that's one piece, the other piece that's required in order to move forward with any, um, construction, it's what takes bids, um, is to have engineering design and develop land specifications for, for the project. So that is the essence of the engineering services phase one this evening. There is not a definitive cost set on that. The estimated cost for those services for both design and in construction observation administration, um, it's approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand for design and two hundred and twenty-five thousand for construction, and this would be for phase one of the runway extension, which should be the grading and the drainage. If you're familiar with that site, with the direction of that runway extension, there's quite a bit of fill material that we need to go in to construct the, the runway extension. So that is the estimated cost for the professional services, that is not in the proposed authorization at this time, um, because the federal government and the FAA requires an independent fee estimate to be prepared by an outside firm, um, that the city would solicit, and so the scope of services that are included here would be distributed by, by the city to another firm, they would prepare an independent estimate, we ask TKDA within our estimate, and then the, the final fee itself would be based on the negotiation, based on that independent estimate.
Yeah, and it's the same thing that we did on the parallel taxiway, and, um, the engineering firm we used then was KLJ, so we might reach out to them again, and, and they don't know what their estimate is, and, I mean, it's all independent, but as a general rule, engineers tend to know, you know, what engineering costs are, because the FAA watches over everything, so it's not like you, you, you go, you go out and broker really, really good deals, because, um, you know, it's just the way the system works. So we, we know based upon, you know, actually, everything that we've worked up with the FAA, what needs to be done on this project, and we'll reach out and get an estimate, compare it to what theirs is, and then, uh, and then we'll bring it back to you so you can look at it.
Right, and the reason, again, that, that it's presented to the council ahead of that point is because of that fast track schedule, um, in order to allow us to design the project and negotiate the final fee later time, but still stay on that schedule, potentially receive bids in time of the twenty twenty FAA grant deadline. It's work that needs to be completed regardless of the, or this design does regardless of the timing of the project, so we'll just continue to monitor things as the land acquisition timing would affect the timing of the actual bids and construction.
We don't know yet if the conditional use permit's been approved yet, do either county commissioners have to meet on that?
Yeah, they're, uh, that'll go before them on April sixth. It looks like they're gonna have a public hearing on that, on April sixth, and then, uh, I think they decide right then and there, I think they have the ability to decide on the conditional use permit. At, uh, actually, Bill, um, contacted me after we found out that the EA was acceptable to the FAA, and, and we had already submitted that application, and, and then Marcus will be there on the sixth to be able to answer any questions they might have on the project that we're doing, but I don't, I don't know that there's gonna be any big issues with that, that I know of, it's a pretty straightforward project. We didn't have to do a re, rezoning, because the zoning already took into consideration a much bigger area, um, be, because of when it was originally done, so it should be good.
Now, just, uh, just worst-case scenario, if for some reason something happens with the conditional use permit and doesn't get approved, this money we're spending... This money we're spending on the engineering design, that's pretty much gone then, Marcus? Or whatever, you might understand at that point?
I would presume that there'd be additional conversations with the county depending on what can, their concerns are with, with the project. As Blaine said, there's been, uh, time for the county being involved, the Republican involvement. I really don't anticipate any issues there included as part of the environmental assessment where it was very well detailed that what the anticipated impacts would be. But certainly if that is, does become the case, right, in case that it's based on the county, there's all the very specific issues concerned.
Okay.
But one of the things I, I shared in, in my memo is this is ninety percent funded by the federal government.
Right.
Five percent by the state, five percent local, and, and we, we already know that all the local costs are gonna be shared by superior.
Right, exactly.
So for us, I, I, I haven't heard any, I mean, it's an airport, it's allowable use in the zone that it's in. So the worst-case scenario for me, I think, is if they came up with some kinda commit, condition that we had to meet, uh, with regards to the airport. I have no idea what that might be, but, uh, that could be a possibility, but we didn't have one before.
And if that is the case, certainly the environmental assessment could be opened up in a supplemental environmental prepared or something that came out of left field.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions or concerns on the resolution? Thank you, Marcus. So we have a resolution authorizing professional services from TKDA Engineering for phase one design for the runway extension project at Morris Municipal Airport. I will move the resolution.
I will second.
Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wallers?
Yes.
Salvi?
Yes.
Gillison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Hees?
Yes.
City manager report.
Again, I just talked about the conditional use per- permit. Uh, met with BN and MINDAT, they're gonna redo the crossing signals at, uh, West Sixth Street Crossing. Actually, this question came up probably about three years ago from BN. Ideally, they'd like to close West Sixth Street.
What do you mean closed? Like the whole street?
Just close it. It's no longer gonna be an access to come across from Pacific Avenue to Main Street.
Wow.
Because it's, cause we have three crossings in a row. So I told the guy, man, that's not gonna happen. And, and, and he said, well, you, you don't realize, and I said, you've never been a city manager, have you? Cause I can guarantee you that there'd be a lot of people that would be very upset with that. And so I said I would bring it up to you and if you can let me know what you want me to tell them.
They have a business that's located right there in the corner to the west, and I can't imagine that's gonna sit real well with them.
One of them's a state highway, one of them's by an elevator.
Yeah, I don't see how that's.
The interesting, the interesting part is if you go over there and look, um, the, this, this one side of rock crosses, there is no sidewalks really going across. One, one, if you're coming down the one sidewalk on the north side, you have to go on the, the road side of the crossing gate to get around it. You cannot get around the backside. There's a couple of things that are probably gonna change in that area just because of, you know, there's like, it looks like there's an old sign there or something. They, they were wondering what that was, and I said, I have no idea. It looks like an old sign, cause there's a big metal frame or something there, but, um, but actually, and then I looked on Fifth Street, what, what we're gonna look at doing is bringing the curbs out farther into the street by those parking lots. And then on the south side, you can come across with the sidewalk behind, and then they'll bring, they'll bring the crossing arm in a little bit more so that you can get behind it with the sidewalk. And then actually, there's no handicap curbing on that curb and gutter that's on the, the, uh, parking lots. If you go on the south side, uh, on the west side of the tracks, there is no curb and gutter. And actually, that's, that's kind of a big red flag for, for, uh, for BN because their crossing arm is basically sitting out there and somebody could drive right, I mean, it's drive over ground, drive right up into it, smash into it as opposed to hitting a curb and bouncing off of it. So, so there's a couple of things that, that we're gonna look at doing differently, but, um, you know, as far as taking it out, I, there's just no way you'd wanna take it out. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I can't see that happening either.
And they're, they're just, I think, looking at cost, cause it's expensive to put in the new crossing signals and everything. And they didn't throw me out an amount, but they suggested that they might pay us some money to take it out, but I don't think it was gonna be the amount of money that they're gonna spend on doing the crossing arm.
Well, I mean, you could, you could always throw back a number, Blaine.
Yeah, couple, couple million.
We got a lot of road projects to do.
Couple million dollars.
What would it cost to build an overpass?
Well, I think we could, you know, we could sacrifice one crossing for a nice road project or something. I don't think.
We'd have to relocate some businesses.
I think that'll landmark it, would tend to disagree with you.
I agree. So I'm assuming you don't wanna take it out, and I'll go back to them and tell them that we're not gonna take it out.
Would you like a motion to that effect?
Yeah, if you wanna do a motion.
I will move that we, uh, do not remove the West Sixth Street Crossing.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Period, okay.
Uh, and the last thing I'll talk, cause we're gonna have Morse Model Meeting, so we can talk about, you know, some of the stuff that happened with Guido and everything that we're working on. But, uh, I did put a note in there about the hillside addition out there, cause we actually wound up having a property owner that was very upset because it wasn't draining right. And, uh, I think over the last couple of years, guys have tried to clear out a drainage, steam out a drainage deal. There is no drainage in there.
It was, it was never built that way.
It was, it did, there wa- it was like below the high school over in, um, the Highland Homes area, there's no drainage put in. So the actual drain that they're trying to clean out was something that one of the property owners put in to drain out in front of their property. And actually, when they steamed it, the, the water was kinda coming up in the backyard. So that's, so it didn't actually go down to the ditch or any, I think it just went out into the ground somewhere. And, and I decided I'd let you know that just because, you know, if you hear anything about that, it's another example of how a neighborhood got built without drainage. The only way to correct it is eventually in the future, whenever things are redone, you know, to put in drainage, um, and one of the things I would tell you is that, uh, I think I brought up the fact that Jeff Kuhn may have found some federal funds that could be used to, um, redo Seventh Street and bring maybe water and sewer down Seventh Street in the future. Uh, and one of the things that we talked about is always trying to figure out how to get water and sewer over to that neighborhood. So down the road, eventually you, you would hope that you'd be able to connect them up to city water and sewer as opposed to wells and septic tanks.
And I think that's what we've eventually been working on, you know, is through that system where that place was put in twenty-seven years ago, and we annexed it in.
Right.
So I mean, that's what we're kinda, you know, in all the, a lot of different projects we've been doing to different areas, been annexed into the city over time. And the people that put in those sister roads and all that stuff, they're not up to city specs. And that's, I think, I believe that's what we've been, Blaine's been pushing and, and we have too, over time. So as, I think that we don't, we're not getting as much fight back as if they would come back into the city and, uh, cause I lived up there and there, there is no storm sewer up there, water, sewer or anything.
And I think we've been waiting for the, the neighborhood to petition for services for a request from them to us instead of us trying to force them.
Right.
To have to, cause it's gonna be expensive unless we can find some grants, but.
Yeah.
Even if we do find grants, it's gonna be expensive.
Yep.
So would that happen now if somebody were to put an addition that they would, we would, this would be done this way, or would you always say, no, we're gonna put drainage?
Well, what I, what I would tell you is what I told the planning commission, that neighborhood should never been built, ever been built. We had the right as a city back in nineteen seventy-eight to zone around the city of Morris. And if somebody came in today and said, I wanted to build a residential neighborhood that had wells and septic tanks in it, it'd be like, nope, you're not gonna do it. It makes absolutely no sense, you know, to, to do that. And at the same time, like the Iowa Avenue Town Homes, um, we didn't accept those, you know, down by the Armory Road. So I know this, when they had, um, the big water problems, I, was it last year?
Yeah.
Um, they called and complained, I gotta call it like two o'clock in the morning, and it's like, you better get your butt down here now, cause my house is about ready to flood and you're gonna be responsible for it. And then you find out, it's like, we don't own, we don't own the road, it's your road. You own that road together as a, as a group, you know? So you have to talk to the person who built the neighborhood and try to figure out what you're gonna do, because we don't plow it, we don't maintain it, we don't do anything with that one. Ballpark Townhouse, I think, was done in a way where we accepted that one, even though they still do some of their own maintenance on, um, you know, we'd get into discussions about where they pile snow from driveways and things like that. But, but yeah, it, it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow that now. It just doesn't make any sense why you would ever allow that, cause there's not enough room for the things that you need. Our standard now is, is, is a pretty good standard for how you build neighborhoods. And hopefully we get to the point where, I talked to somebody, uh, earlier, uh, today actually, about Seventh Street, you know, the, ideally, when the time comes, you know, we would bring water and sewer down Seventh Street, but it's still up to the neighborhoods to decide to bring it into their neighborhood, cause, uh, you couldn't just do it for one person. It wouldn't work that way.
Anything else in the city manager report?
Nope.
Any other business to come before the council?
I actually do have something, Mayor. Um, Blaine, I was just wondering, what, what process are we using right now to select tree trimmers slash tree removal companies in town for that business, you know, when we, like, if we have a need as a city, do we have a process in place and who we're selecting?
Uh, I don't know that there's an official process. I think they've had a working relationship with tree trimmers, you know, depending on what, what they need. I would say if somebody's feels like they should be getting a shot at doing it, they should probably talk to Jim Dittbener, cause it's probably, uh, it's not a big bid project. It's more of, uh, when they can get to it and case by case as they're going. I know, uh, depending on the size of the tree, there's, there's individuals that they feel comfortable with being able to take down big trees, cause our guys don't, don't have the capability of doing that. So if, so if somebody feels like they're slighted, have them come in and talk to me.
Yeah, I just think, I would hope that we're being fair about that. I guess I was approached by an individual and, and, uh, I guess, wondering how that whole process works, and I didn't really have a good answer for him, so I just, I wanted to find out, you know, I mean, uh, I think we would like to be respectful of locally owned businesses and try to be fair, cause obviously they pay taxes, everything else and so.
Well, I, do the, does Jim, is Jim aware of this other service? I mean, are they, I mean, sometimes you wouldn't even be, maybe you wouldn't even be aware that somebody has another service if they don't present themselves or, or call City Hall and say, hey, I do tree service, anything you want, or whatever, and just assume that they're getting excluded for some other reason. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I mean, that can happen if they have an approach.
This is a company that's been around in Morris forever. He just felt that he hasn't been getting a fair shake, so.
Is he been making bids though?
Well, there's, uh, there's like three of them in town.
Yeah.
So one of them's not really doing much anymore. Uh, and one of them's a newer one, and then one of them's the one that's been around that's been doing a lot of work. But, but yeah, I would have them give me a call, cause, cause I think, you know, it's one of those things where, uh, and I can tell you, I went through that process getting a tree taken down at my mom's place, and that was probably one of the bigger home trees in town, and there was only one person in town that would touch it and originally didn't wanna touch it. And so there's a company from out of town that was gonna do it, and eventually that person came back and said, yeah, I'll do it. Cause it, it's, the big ones are really tough to drop them in the right place and stuff, but no, I, I.
Yeah, and that, I guess I was thinking too after, you know, I had this conversation with this, uh, individual, that it'd be a rather difficult thing to put out on bids, because, I mean, how do you know when, you know, you're gonna need the work and that sort of thing? So I just don't know how, I don't know if there's really a fair way you could set it up, so you give them all a shot at the work, or if we just leave it in Jim's hands and he, you know, does his due diligence and making sure he's being fair to, you know, the local, other local companies that are out there trying to make a living, so. I just, I just wanted to have a discussion about it, just to see if we could come up with some sort of a fair way to do it, but I don't know what that would be, but.
Well, I think that Jim would have, if, if they're, he would, if they talked to him, they could have their rates available. You know, this is what we do for each of it, but then it, it also comes down to availability.
Like their capabilities.
He might go through and say, okay, you're the cheapest, I'm gonna get you to come in and do the job, but you can't do it during the dates that I need it done. Then you kinda get, you know, it, it's kind of on demand too. It, it's a tough thing to do, but as long as the stuff is there and Jim's looking at it, I think that's the most important.
We know who they all are in town, I would assume. I mean, Jim probably knows who they are.
Yeah, I think he knows who they are.
But to Blaine's point, you know, that, we could stay within their capabilities too, cause some trees, like you say, maybe they couldn't do them. At least maybe give them a courtesy call and say, hey, could, would you be willing to do it, or could you do it?
And I believe the tree board has requested to have some training on the trimming for the trees, and if you're willing to do the training to the standards that they want when they are trimming trees for the city.
Yeah, that's why. I was wondering if we, you know, what sort of, uh, cause I'd never really thought about it all that much, I just, you know, I was approached, I thought, well, we'll have a discussion and see what happens, but, okay.
Okay, great. Anything else to come before the council? Okay, meeting adjourned.